Good afternoon and welcome to the February meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum as there are five present here and there are two others on Zoom per the Governor's executive order, so therefore I call the meeting to order. You all should have received minutes in the packet and have, I hope, reviewed them. Are there any additions or corrections to be made? If not, the Chair welcomes a motion to approve.
I'll take a motion to approve as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call. I got it this time.
You did. Great job.
For the motion.
Commissioner Backland. Commissioner Belcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Becker.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Salas.
Aye.
Commissioner Jakes.
Aye.
And Chairman Thompson.
Aye.
The meetings that there are approved, so we'll go into the new business. And Amelia, if you would like to present the project.
Certainly. This is for 451 East College Street for Richard and Zicky Fuehl. The property is located on the north side of East College Street, several lots to the west of North Highland Avenue. It contains approximately 2.26 acres. The property is zoned RSA, Single Family Residential District, and HI Historic Zoning Overlay District. It is also located in the CCO district. A single-family home was previously located on this property in March of 2019. The Commission voted to approve the request to demolish the home, and since it has been torn down, and in January of 2020, the Historical Zoning Committee approved the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a lot directly to the west. The photographs of that subject property are in your agenda packet. The new property owner is now in the process of constructing a new single-family home on the property that the HCC approved for the new construction, and that was in June of 2020. And they approved the constructions in regard to the architecture, the driveway, the front parking area, the garage doors, the Marvin Wood windows, the fixed grids on the inside and outside with a space bar, soffits, gutter boards, gutters, roof, gas lights, and rear yard fencing. The Historical Zoning Committee did include the condition that the final design and details for the paving, the roofing, the garage doors, the man doors, and the fencing had to be submitted for administrative review and approval by the Planning Department. Staff approved these items in October in order for the applicant to obtain their building permit. These material photos and documentation of the approved items were also included in your agenda. Just to give you some photographs of the project as it is being constructed now, as you can see, that is going to have the front side entry garage, and it's still going to have the parking in the front. This is a side shot from the neighbor to the east. This is directly in front of the house to the east, looking down the side of the property. What we will be looking at today is a fence that's going to go down this line on that retaining wall, as well as some items that relate to some windows that they're going to change, just designs on them. They're still going to be Marvin windows. So also included in your agenda packet are the current site plan and architectural renderings, which include some revisions and additions from the previously approved plans. The Historical Zoning Committee will need to review these items and consider them for approval. These revisions will include a diamond grid window at the front door area and also one on the west elevation of the home, an addition of a retaining wall with a six-foot fence atop extended to include the east boundary. Previously, it was only going to be the backyard that was going to have the fence, but now they're going to extend it both on the east and west property lines to the front of the home. The paving selection, and then they're going to be installing a pool, which will not be visible from the right-of-way, which we will not make a decision on that, and then the gardening building. During the initial review at the 2020 Historical Zoning Committee meeting, a request was made to provide architectural plans and evidence that the garden building at the rear of the property is not visible from the right-of-way. The architectural plan also now includes the storage garden building in the rear of the property and is also located on the site. Plan staff believes it is possible that the storage building, including the roof, may be visible from the right-of-way. The details have been included in your application. The applicants are here to answer any questions the Commission may have. There again, you're just going to be looking at the fence details, as well as this window on the front, and then there's a window that matches that on the west elevation, and they are the Marvin windows. This is the garden building that is in the rear of the property. As you can see, it is an A-frame shaped structure. It is possible that from certain areas, from the sidewalk in front of it, that it may be possible to see that building, but I think it would be a slight visual.
Is that it?
That's it.
Who would like to come before us and present the changes? If you'd state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Terry Bates. I'm the architect from Nashville, 1705 Ackland Avenue.
Right. Why don't we, to make this short and sweet as possible, go through the list, and I don't know what the Commission feels, if you want to approve each item separately or do them all together. I get always a little worried when there's a long list.
Let's do them separately.
Separately, okay. Let's talk about the diamond grid window on the front and the west elevation then.
Actually, we did not put that in on the west elevation. It's just like all the others. We axed that, so it's only the one on the front of the house, and it's just a feature window on the porch, and so we changed it just for decorative purposes.
That's the frustrating thing, is there constantly are changes in the drawings we're reviewing shows the diamond window on the west elevation.
Well, originally, it wasn't approved that way. We just went back to kind of what we had before.
But we don't know that you went back to, just you saying that, these drawings.
I'm sorry, that was actually a mistake on our part when we sent it into review. I missed that that was still on there. I apologize for that.
So it's just on the front?
Just on the front.
And it's in the porch?
Within the porch, yes.
Okay. Does the Commission have any questions? If not, the Chair welcomes a motion to approve the diamond check window.
I'll move to approve the decorative diamond window.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll row.
We'll have a roll call then for this particular change.
You said you did. Bill Jakes.
Aye.
Chase Salas.
Aye.
Jeff Davis.
Aye.
Jim Backlin.
Aye.
Debra Belcher.
Aye.
David.
David Becker.
Aye.
And Jim Thompson.
And Jim Thompson.
Okay, the second item is, while we're at this, on the drawing elevations, it shows, the front elevation shows a custom stone column by owner, but then on the detail, it shows a wood column. What is it?
We're probably going to do a stone column. We're looking at either a cut stone or a marble column on the front.
I would request that you notify the administration to let us.
We'll be happy to do that.
Doing, because again, the drawings don't coordinate. Let's now go to the retaining wall, the six-foot fence on the east, extended to include the east boundary. Could you describe again the placement of the fence and the heights?
On the east boundary, two things, there's the retaining wall, and when we started doing the site work, a small retaining wall was necessary just because of the grading and trying to get the drainage from the backyard, positive drainage to the front. I think on the original, back in June, we actually did have a wall along the east side, I mean a fence. It just didn't come quite as close to the street, so it's maybe 10 feet closer to the street than it was at that time, and we changed the, or would like to change the top detail on the fence. At the June meeting, we mentioned that we would match what's in the backyard, which is a fence that's on the neighbor's property, and it just has kind of an arch to kind of cut at the top, and we're looking at doing a cap and a square top on the side fence. And on the west side, originally at the June meeting, Thomas Jenkins was granted approval to put a fence along that property line, so we really, that wasn't in play because he was granted approval for that. There are some issues with trying to make the drainage work for both properties that we're trying to ferret through right now, and so both the Jenkins and the Fuehls would prefer to have the wall if we can make it work and make the drainage work and still have enough room to do a screening. So that's why we pull that back, or why we're adding it. We added a bit on the back just to enclose the pool because we didn't ask for a pool in June, and now that we have a pool, we've got to add the fence section on the west side back to the house in order to fence the pool then.
To appease the insurance company.
Yes.
Help me, we've got two different photographs of different fence types. Which is the one you want to do?
It's the one on your left.
So this is the one that has the flat board at the top? This one has the dog ear and you.
The dog ear is what we are not planning to do unless we have to.
You're not doing.
Right. That's pre-existing in the back of the property on the neighbors, and we're not planning on changing it, but we would like to do the flat board on the.
East and west?
On the east and west side, yes. It's a little bit of a dressier look in the houses. I think it goes with the house architecture a bit more.
About fences, if I could, you show an eight-foot fence on these elevations in a certain section, and the rest appears to be, I'm going to guess, six feet, but it's not marked.
Correct. The eight-foot fence on the west side is only adjacent to the back porch, and then also there is a trellis section at the window in the, well, adjacent to the living room, which also happens to back up to the Jenkins porch on the other side, so we needed something tall and thin there, so we're looking at doing a kind of a rustic trellis with something green on it so that it will give both homeowners privacy there from that window.
Amelia, does the city allow an eight-foot tall fence?
Yes, sir.
And these trellises that I see, there's also some kind of wire trellis form, which side of the fence are they going to be planted on?
They will be on the Fuehl's side on the west.
Because the drawing looks like it's on the neighbor's side.
And we're going to seek approval from the neighbor to do that. If they will allow us, we're going to put it on their side. If not, then it'll be on the Fuehl's side.
Well, the question I have is who's maintaining these plants then?
Nobody, the neighbors. The Fuehls have agreed to do it. We're not sure if they'll allow it on the east side, but I'm not so sure that they would care about getting their property re-landscaped, but we're going to ask obviously before we do that.
And I'm not sure we can approve landscaping on somebody else's property.
Well, let's just assume it's on the Fuehl's property then.
I can't assume it. Is it or isn't it?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, I remember the Jennings', isn't that an easement between the two properties? Isn't it a jointly owned?
There is a driveway easement. I think it's five feet, am I right? On the Fuehl's property and five feet on the Jenkins'. They are working currently, hopefully, to get rid of that because it goes back to something that's not really even necessary anymore.
But for the purpose of today, won't that allow us to approve, since it's jointly owned?
I'm out of my area of expertise. I don't know.
Matthew?
Without having it in front of me, I don't know the exact language of what the term is.
What the easement says?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess just my concern, if it's built atop the retaining wall, which I imagine is at the property line.
Yes.
Expecting the landscaping and trellis to be on somebody else's property, I don't know that we can personally approve it.
Well, we aren't assuming that they'll let us do that. We're assuming that it'll be on our side if.
That's fine, but we're in a situation where we're in charge of approving something on the property, and if it's not on the property, we don't have any control over.
Well, let's say that it's on the Fuehl's side then for today.
I can't for today.
Well, I mean, let's say that it's on the Fuehl's side because we can't know what the others are going to want to do, so we would like approval to put the landscaping in, and if it needs to be on the Fuehl's side, then we're good with that.
I don't know how to answer that. I mean, we can't approve putting something on somebody else's property.
The structure itself is going to be on the Fuehl's property, and I believe the landscaping, I mean, I still think you may have the property on the other side of the fence, it's not completely on, you're not on the property line on the east side.
And the retaining wall is on the property line, so there is no property on the east side. That belongs to the Fuehl's east side of the proposed fence. So to answer your question, we have to get approval to put landscaping on the Fuehl's side on the east property line?
Well, that would be between you and them and not to be approved as part of this motion.
Right.
We couldn't do it.
Right. We understand that, but that's.
Okay. In that case, is there a motion related to?
I have one other question.
Please.
On the east side, the fence is going to be on top of the retaining wall?
Yes, and approximately six inches.
The retaining wall looks like it's about two foot high?
Yes, on the neighbor's side, on the east side of the retaining wall, only six inches of the concrete will show, so it's basically just a curb base for the fence to sit on.
Okay.
But on the Fuehl's side, at the back of the property, there's about two feet or so of the retaining walls that is visible.
So the fence, the wood fence, would be six foot on top of the two-foot retaining wall, so it wouldn't be over eight foot total?
The retaining wall on purpose so that the neighbor doesn't see more than six inches that follows the grade on the neighbor's side.
Is the retaining wall on the west side?
It's on, no.
So it's at grade, the eight-foot and the six-foot fence are at grade? Any further questions?
I wanted to clarify, when we were speaking about the fence between the Jennings' home, that is the eastern, no, western side of the Fuehl's house, and you said that the landscaping would be on the east side of that western fence.
Correct.
So technically, the landscaping is on the Fuehl's property, I think.
Yeah, there's no room. I mean, the Jennings driveway comes within six inches of the property line, so there's no option to put any landscaping except on the Fuehl's property on the west side.
Okay, okay.
And so that trellis will be.
All of that is on the Fuehl's side, yes.
It's just the east side, the desired trellis will be, the plants will be on the neighbor if you can work it out.
If not, then it will be on the Fuehl's side, yes.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, the Chair welcomes a motion regarding the fences and the associated landscaping. We don't normally review landscaping per se, but because of this issue about the trellis, that's the reason I say that.
And that's the reason I put in on the rendering, I wanted you to know what the intent was.
I would say, I believe the top cap railing on the wooden fence is an improvement to the dog ear look, so I would move to approve.
We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, we need a roll call for the vote for this particular issue.
Jim Backlin.
Aye.
Debra Belcher.
Aye.
David Becker.
Aye.
Bill Jakes.
Aye.
Chase Salas.
Aye.
Jeff Davis.
Aye.
Jim Thompson.
Aye. The next item is the paving selection, so this is the concrete pavers right outside of the backup space from the garage doors.
Right. We actually haven't changed that from what was, I'm sorry, outside the garage yet. We were considering using a cobble, a concrete cobble outside of the garage, and the decision's been made to use the checkerboard brim swept concrete on all of the driveway and not change material there. And that was submitted also in June as far as the front driveway.
This says that the pool, but there's some, you all think that it was last time? Was the pool approved?
You're not going to be able to see the pool from the right-of-way.
Yeah, you can't see it behind the fence. You can't see it. We really can't review that.
The pool, we're still planning on using the same material that we mentioned, and again, you can't see it, so.
We can't see it, especially with the fence enclosing it, we can't see it, so nothing. I guess the gardening building?
Did we approve the cement?
You can't see it, so they can't, we don't have to approve it.
Okay.
This is at ground level and the fence encloses it and that kind of thing. So the gardening building, that's the next item. Would you like to describe that for us, please?
The garden building, it follows the same basic roof line of the house.
Same pitch.
Same pitch, and the front of it would be covered in a cementous kind of siding, something like a hardy board, and then it's going to have lattice strips on it to give it again that kind of garden look. The whole thing will be painted out the same color as the house, I'm thinking. We haven't made a final decision on that, but the roofing will be the same as the house, and probably from the street, there's a chance that you can see the top ridge of the roof if you're on the west side between the Fuehl's and the Jenkins', just because of the amount of space that's between the houses there because of the driveway. There's a chance that you can see the ridge line a little bit on that, but that's all. You're not going to see very much of it, I don't think at all.
I did notice that the site plan does not indicate where it is. All we know, there's a pool and there's a setback.
No, there is a site plan.
No, but it doesn't show the building.
Oh, the one I sent in, let's see, it's eight.
Doesn't show a building. Shows a path. Maybe it's our set, but it doesn't show a footprint.
Let me go back up. It's closer to the front of the packet, I believe.
Could you, could you, Amelia, go to the site plan?
Well, yes, sir.
There's two sheets on that.
This is the site plan that we received with this submittal, that the red box on there is what I put on there, guesstimating the size of the building based on what I could read off the plans, and the location is, that box I actually placed on there.
It's on sheet 28 of the.
I don't have it by now. I have AS1-01, but the set that we received from you, Matthew, doesn't show it.
Yeah, my computer is, if it's the same as yours, it's on page 28 of the computer submittal.
Oh, you're talking about the single sheet.
Garden shed and.
That.
Yeah, that has the dimensions of the garden shed and also the location relative to the house and the pool.
What's the relationship of the back of the building to the setback?
The back and the west side is on the setback.
Does the trellis, do you intend to landscape, like put a vine on it or something?
Yes.
So it'll green up in the summertime? What questions does the Commission have?
Looking at the drawings, the trellis work, to me, on the drawings kind of resembles a Tudor design against the wall of the, you know, the exposed beams that are typical with Tudor upstairs. Am I seeing that right, or are these trellis, are they a setback off the wall, or are they flush with the wall?
You know, that on the front of the garden building?
Yes, and it appears on the roof line that extends down.
The roof is the same material as the house.
Okay.
And all of the garden building is the same reverse board and batten that is being used on the house with the exception of the front north, I mean, south elevation, and that's going to be more of the lattice look.
Okay.
Is it fair to say that the lattice is above the edge of the porch?
It's the whole front. It's the whole front.
Openings there. Is it just the central opening that's an opening?
Sorry, go to the next page, which is 29. Is that where we are? The front elevation, which is the south elevation, that's going to be gritted off to look like lattice, the whole elevation. The actual triangular sections to the left and right, those are open lattice screens. They're not actually building. There is an indention in the middle that is a column section that creates a smaller four-foot deep porch. The back of that also has the lattice on it, so everything on the south side has a lattice treatment to the facade. The other three facades are all the reverse board and batten that match the house.
Between the four columns, how many of those spaces, the three spaces, how many of those are openings that you can physically walk through?
Only, there's a breezeway that cuts through the middle one only.
Just the middle pair of columns?
Hmm.
Just the middle pair of columns is an opening?
Yes.
The other sides are lattice between the columns of the porch?
Yeah, there's a building left and right with the breezeway through the middle.
Oh, I see, yes, I'm sorry. Any further questions or discussions? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion.
Make a motion, we approve as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, may we have a roll call for the vote?
Jim Backlin.
Aye.
Debra Belcher.
Aye.
David Becker.
Aye.
Bill Jakes.
Aye.
Chase Salas.
Aye.
Jeff Davis.
Aye.
And Jim Thompson.
Yes. That is all that we have on the list, but because the document has so much information in there, we have garage doors again, but that's. we have garage doors again, but that's just a mistake. It's already been approved. So we know what the garage doors are. They've been approved and been ordered, I assume.
I'm not aware of anything else that hasn't been approved, no.
I'm just making sure that everything we got sent, that we have everything resolved. I believe that to be it, then. Anything else?
So anything on the, between the Fuels and the Jennings', going to have to jointly be, that easement is foggy to me. It's going to have to jointly be agreed upon, right?
Correct. And we've been over that with Thomas as recently as a couple hours ago.
Okay.
And they're working on it both with civil engineers because of the drainage issues, because both properties drain to that area. As well as, I think Dick's been with an attorney, and Thomas is aware of this, they both would like to get rid of that easement because it's not to anybody's benefit to have it there anymore. But that's just some legalese that I can't really speak to right now. But, and that's one reason we're not 100% sure what happens on that property line yet. Thomas would prefer to put his fence up. But currently, that's a problem because it's right on top of where his drainage has to go. So all that's being worked on.
There are other similar easements on East Main Street as well. Bubba's old house and the next property, it's a joint easement.
Yeah, there was one at my house.
Anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Amelia, do you have, we have some staff reports and new business?
Under other business, we do. We have a gentleman with us, Mr. Tally Floyd. He is with Middle Tennessee Electric. He has some information for the commissioners. It's not anything that you have to take action on. It's just something, Middle Tennessee Electric is going to be doing some work down Main Street, trimming some trees and I think maybe some line repairs. But they wanted to make you aware of it. So in the event that you got phone calls from individuals in the area about it, that you are aware of what's happening. Mr. Tally? Mr. Floyd?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Tally Floyd, and I can see people on the screen. And I have no idea who I'm talking to, so, and I don't know who's watching me. So not that it matters, I'll be the same thing, whether ten people are watching me or one. But I guess I'll, and I don't know how much time I have, and I don't want to take up too much time. But I'll say that my boss, Tom Doug, a few days ago, he asked me if I would reach out to you guys and just sort of let you all know what we're doing, just as a matter of courtesy and so on, and see if you all had any questions. So Middle Tennessee, of course, Middle Tennessee and MED merged last year. And I am the vegetation program manager. So I manage the entire vegetation, right-of-way program, tree pruning, tree replacements, and all that sort of thing for Middle Tennessee Electric. And we, of course, assume responsibility of taking care of the city of Murfreesboro as well. And I met with, via Zoom, we had a Zoom board meeting last month, Middle Tennessee did. And I presented a PowerPoint presentation about what we're doing, what we're planning to do in Murfreesboro and throughout the whole system for the year. And a couple of the new board members, who come from the city, they were on there. So they had some questions. And we had a good Q and A about the work that we're doing. I was just really going to kind of share a little bit about that with you guys and ladies, and just see where it goes from there. So, and feel free to ask any questions if you like. I guess the long and short of it is, and by the way, I live in Franklin. And I do appreciate what you all do because my mother-in-law lives on Main Street in Franklin. And she's heavily involved with the Heritage Foundation. And hearing that conversation reminds me that just a few months ago, she had her concrete, her driveway converted to concrete. So she went through some of the same back and forth with Heritage Foundation. But anyway, we, as I shared with at our board meeting last month, we want to make sure that we're sensitive to the historic district of Murfreesboro. We're taking some extra steps to, I guess, tread lightly, if you will, in that area, even more so than in other areas. Our boss, Chris Jones, the president of the company, made it clear to me and my boss several times, Main Street corridor, basically, in so many words, leave it alone. And I said, that's fine. So just a real quick, quick study on the power lines. In the historic district, Main Street proper really just has a lot of service lines. There are no primary lines, in other words, high voltage lines that run up and down Main Street. They're all what we call backlot or back easement, in backyards and in the back street, right? So Main Street proper has a lot of service lines. And that's good because you can have incidental contact between service lines and tree limbs. And members don't lose power. There's no power interruption there, unless it gets extreme and so on. But generally, incidental contact, you don't have a problem. When we have our primary lines, which are our lines that are higher in the air, bare wire, that is run at 7,200 volts. MED runs at a 7,200 volt system. When we have incidental contact with those power lines from the limbs, that's when we have power outages and length and so on. So that's our charge and our challenge is just to make sure that we create space between the wires and the tree limbs on the primary lines. So I guess, all that being said, we've had a few people talk to us about, what are we going to do on Main Street? And really, we're not going to do much of it on Main Street. There's really no reason to. Now, the backlot properties, where we have areas where there's contact or close contact between the limbs and the power lines, we're going to have to immediately create space between those lines and limbs. And again, because it is the historic district, we're going to take steps to not only let our members know, make contact with them twice, we're going to make contact with them three times before we create that space just so that everyone in that area knows what we're doing. Nobody feels like we're sort of sticking in there, doing work and getting out of there. We're trying to be real upfront about everything, and we are. We welcome any questions and conversations with our members. So that's kind of the story I wanted to tell with you all. And if you had any questions about that.
If the public has any questions, what phone number should they call to get answers?
The number is, let me see here, let me make sure I get that right. You can always go to our website and get the vegetation number, but we have an under number that is manned during work hours, and they can always do the voicemail. But the lady who works under my supervision, she answers that line all the time. And she can give them any information they need. It's 877-414-7685. And it's, again, it's on our website. That's our vegetation number, and they can call, ask questions, and she can explain our process, what we do. And we have, so we have four supervisors under my supervision who work the system. One for county. And the gentleman who worked Russell County also has assumed ownership of Murfreesboro. So he's dedicated to Russell County and Murfreesboro. So he visits with our members when they have calls and need to speak with someone in the field. He'll drive out, meet with them, and talk about their options and that sort of thing.
What hours of the day and what days of the week does the tree trimming occur?
So it happened, our crews in Murfreesboro work four 10-hour days. They work 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Thursday. And we've got two crews working, oh, no, I'm sorry, four crews working right now.
There's no work on the weekend?
No, sir. Unless there's a storm event or some sort of emergency, yeah.
Could you repeat that 877 number, please?
Yes, and I will repeat that. And if somebody, it's 877-414-7685.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I'm not trying to be cute, but I don't call that number every day. So I think that, I'm 99% sure that's right, but I'll make sure.
If you could get back with Amelia and let her know, verify that that number is correct, we will put it in our minutes to make sure that we have that.
Okay. I like that name, Amelia, because that's my daughter's name.
She must be smart.
That's a pretty name.
Anything else, new business, Amelia?
Yes, we do. We have a new member in the planning department that is helping us with the historical zoning committee meetings. And she took Brenda Davis's place, who moved down into administration offices. And Serena Harris has joined us to help out with the historical zoning committee. We'd like to everybody.
I apologize for not introducing you earlier. That's a mistake, and I apologize. Anything else?
And the first name of Ms. Harris?
Serena.
Serena?
Like Serena Williams. If there's no other items that the commission would like to offer, the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we need a roll call? Yeah.
Wrap it up, make it clean.
Make it clean. Okay, one more time, one more time, Amelia.
Gabe Backlin?
Aye.
Deborah Belcher?
Aye.
David Becker?
Aye.
Bill Jakes?
Aye.
Chase Salas?
Aye.
Jeff Davis?
Aye.
Jim Thompson?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. I'd like to ask.